Good morning, everyone. It is 10 o'clock, and I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. We will start with a salute to the flag. And if Barbara Twitchell could lead us, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, if we could start with a roll call.
Of course. Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman, Vice Chair, is absent. Mike Clark.
Present.
Marius Garcia, here. Clara Andreola.
President.
County Manager Eric Brown.
Here.
Assistant DA Nathan Edwards.
Here.
And I'm Jan Galacine. You're a county clerk. Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. And now we will move into Item Three. Mr. Manager.
Item Three. Test, test, there we go. Item Three is Commissioners and County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Thank you very much. And do you have anything for us, Mr. Manager?
I do not, Madam Chair.
Okay. Before I lead into the other commissioners, there's been talk out there online that the county commission removed public comment from the beginning of this meeting, or that I, as Chair, did that. That is not the case. Since 2020, and maybe even before, but we know that since 2020, we have not had public comment before our canvas of the vote. It is a one-item meeting. So we look forward to hearing your public comment, but I just want to clarify that for the record. I am looking to the board to see if anyone else has an announcement. Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't know how they did it back in 2020, but I think that the folks in the community, after we've had public comment taken away at the start of the meeting for several months this past year, are very sensitive to public comment. Whether it's only one item on the agenda or not, I think public comment should have been held at the beginning of the meeting, then the agenda item, and then public comment about that, and then public comment at the end. So we haven't had a meeting for almost a month on this body, and I think there was public comment and public discussion, and people want to air their thoughts and grievances and comments about anything that's taken place. And this would have been a good opportunity to do it. It's a short day. We could have had public comment and let people talk about whatever they needed to talk about. There's very, very few county commission meetings and other commission meetings, and even the cab meeting I was at last night that doesn't have public comment at the start of the meeting and at the end of the meeting. And I think we should offer that. It's an opportunity for the public to share with us what their thoughts are. And not having it just because they didn't have it back in 2020 doesn't mean anything to me. That was then, and this is now. And I think there's a whole different political climate out there, and the public are starting to wake up and want to have their views heard. And I think we need to hear their views. So anything that was said on social media or any other place is immaterial. We should have had it, or we should have at least had a discussion amongst ourselves about it, or with the district attorney. So that's my thoughts on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have comments? I'm not seeing any. We will now move to Item Four. Mr. Manager.
Item Four is a declaration of canvas of vote and order for 2024 presidential primary election, as required by NRS 293.387. Canvas means a review of the elections' results by the Board of County Commissioners, by which any errors within the election results are officially noted, and the official election results are declared. The canvass shall separately note any clerical errors discovered and take account of the changes resulting from the errors discovered, and the results declared must represent the true vote cast. As soon as the board declares the results, the registrar voters shall certify the abstract of the results, which must contain the number of votes cast for each candidate, and enter in the record for the board, of the board, I'm sorry. The board shall order the registrar voters to transmit a copy of the certified abstract, as well as a mechanical report of the abstract, in accordance with regulations adopted by the Secretary of State, to the Secretary of State within the time required by NRS 293.387.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And I think we have a staff review on this?
Yes, we will have our interim registrar voters. Carrie Anne Burgess.
Thank you. Thank you, Manager Brown, and also commissioners. I am Carrie Anne Burgess, and I am the interim registrar of voters. I want to stand before you this morning and express my gratitude for the opportunity I had to run this past election. I'm very passionate and grateful to be in this position that I am in. I also have my full staff, perm staff, in the audience today, because they not only ran the election, but they did the best possible job that they could do. And I wanted to be able to thank them publicly.
Yes, an incredible team. We should applaud them. Being an election worker is the hardest job in local government right now, and it is a scary job as well. And so thank you for your commitment to our republic and our democracy.
So because of that, because they are here, I just wanted to say thank you. I also wanted to say thank you for all the temporary staff that we have in our office who stepped up, who learned, who are still actually managing the office so we could be here this morning. One of the first things I'd like to do, though, is we had an issue with our sample ballots, and that was completely 100% my fault. When we sent the file to our print vendor, I understood that when they opted out of the mail ballot, they also opted out of the sample ballot, not knowing that they can still get a sample ballot if they opt out of the mail ballot. That was 100% my fault, and no fault of my staff. So now knowing that, knowing that they still get a sample ballot, that will not happen in any further election. There was no malicious intent at all with that. That was just me not knowing. In this election, we had 16 early vote centers, 17 on Election Day, none of which would have been possible without all of our election workers, our observers, our ballot runners, supply runners, and tech runners. So thank you to all who worked on Election Day and worked in this election. Before we start in the election, we start with our pre-lat, which is our logic and accuracy test. This is a process of testing our tabulators to process our mail ballots, as well as our ICX in-person machines. This is all overseen and signed off by our certification board that consists of bipartisan community members. We had a total of three members on the certification board this time. We originally had five, but two were unable to make the time commitments. I'm grateful for those who were on the board and the time and the attention that they gave to process and to ensure the processes were done correctly. We do have one of those board members actually in the audience today, and I would like to say thank you to them. When our election is complete, our certification board comes back, and they come back and they do the VB pat audit, which is our voter verification paper audit trail. When the voter votes on the machine, it is recorded on the machine, but then we also have paper to go along with that to make sure that it is all correct. The certification board signs off on all rejected ballots also. In this election, we had 938 rejected ballots, which were ones that came back after the time allotted that we could actually accept them in the mail. We also had a lot of ballots that had the wrong envelopes, missing ballots, missing envelopes. A lot of the ballots were written on. We had lots of love letters from people written on the ballots, and those ballots were also not able to be counted. We recognize that there are some processes that we can absolutely streamline, we can do better, and we are going to be working on that. We are having roundtables with everybody who did work on this election, within the county and outside of the county. I look forward to that feedback so that we can make things more transparent and a lot more streamlined. We are continuously making and looking forward to those improvements. In front of you, you do have the election results. We had a total of 48,438 total votes cast in this election. We had 3,193 votes cast on Election Day, 3,728 votes cast in early voting. We only had one week of early voting this time. And 41,517 votes that were cast by mail. Out of all of our registered for either Republican or Democrat for this election, we only had 24% of our population vote in this election. Of that, 85.7 were voted by mail and 14.3 were voted in person. Any questions?
Okay, so I will open it up to the board for questions or comments, and then we will open it up to public comment before we move forward with action. So looking to the board to see Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to say that I attended the Republican Caucus at Pleasant Valley Elementary School. There were thousands of folks there. I didn't count exactly how many of them were. I couldn't have been more proud of being in my district, too, and watching the process there, run by volunteers. I didn't see any security guards. I didn't see any need for security guards. It was peaceful. Everything got done. People came in, they showed their IDs, they were checked off of the rolls, and everything ran as smooth as smooth could be. You know, watching that, I'm wondering why the last several years, the boogeyman is around everywhere you look, elections. And Chair Hill just mentioned that this is one of the most dangerous jobs in the world. It's just like, what the hell's going on around here? I saw a bunch of Nevadans come in and cast their votes and leave, and there was no problems. Why can't we seem to get back to that, the way that elections used to be run? This was a very proud evening to watch the folks at a very little cost. And in fact, I'd like to see if the staff can show what the Republican Caucus might have cost the county, if anything, and then compare it to the cost that the county incurred to have this presidential primary vote, and then just have a comparison. You know, I was at a cab meeting last night, and Manager Brown talked about things that he'd learned about, he was making a presentation about the county and the state of the county, and talked about things that they'd learned. And one of the things, and how he hired outside companies and entities to teach us how to do it, one of the things you could have done is sent representatives from the registrar voters' office and watched how the public ran a fair and honest election. So that's the comment that I have. Next, again, a very proud night to watch that, because all this boogeyman stuff, and this, and that, and the mail, and this, and, you know, people showed their ID, voted, paper ballots, had it counted, knew the results later that night or the very next morning. So that's one issue. I want to talk about also the U.S. Postal Service going to shut, apparently going to shut down the mail center here in Washoe County. I don't know if most of the folks know that or do know that. All of our mail now is going to be directed, apparently that's the intent or the plan, or at least they're discussing it, they shouldn't even be discussing it as far as I'm concerned, moving all mail to Sacramento over a mountain road, a windy mountain road, a dangerous road, on trucks. The trucks will be hauling, will be the lowest, low bidder, moving trucks over the hill, and that's just all the mail. But think about this, this is just happening just before our primary election. What about the chain of command, chain of control? Who's going to be watching this? These aren't U.S. postal trucks.
So Commissioner Clark, we're here to talk about the canvas of the presidential preference primary. DA Edwards, I'm just curious, should we have this as a future item for the board to discuss?
I'm going to get to that if you'll give me a moment. I'm going to ask the board to put this on the future agenda.
I just asked for DA Edwards, just to step in.
Yeah, I'm going to ask this board to put that on the future agenda. And let me get to that, please.
You can ask for that.
And quit interrupting me. How dare you?
It is my job as Chair to keep this meeting on track.
And it's going to be on track if you'll let me get it on track and keep it on track.
I've been asked a question by the Chair.
Thank you.
And I think that as long as the commissioner ties it to the presidential primary, which it sounds like he's going to do, I think that it's okay.
I look forward to hearing that.
But thank you.
Yet again, trying to keep me from discussing what I need to discuss up here. And thanks for interrupting. What I want to talk about this is, I am talking about future elections. I'm talking about this election, and I want to talk about how this will impact what's taking place here. So I'd like to see an agenda item in the future from our commission to the postmaster general of the United States to not close the Reno main post office for a lot of reasons. Elections is just part of it, but there's a lot of people who work at that facility that need to keep their jobs, and it's part of our economy. We're all U.S. taxpayers, and we should have a postal center in our town and not have to. And elections is just a side issue. That's an unintended consequence. So what I was getting at, thank you again for interrupting and drawing attention to yourself, that we need to have a letter, we should have it on the agenda here.
And this is great. You can bring this up on Item Five.
Thank you. Have it on the agenda to ask the U.S. Postmaster, as the county, to not close the postal center here. We should also get letters out to the congressmen and the two senators that represent our state and ask them to ask the postmaster not to close our U.S. Postal Center here for a number of reasons. And elections just happens to be an unintended consequence of that. So that's what I wanted to get across. So thank you.
Any other commissioners have comments? I'm not seeing any. So Madam Clerk, we will now move to public comment.
We have quite a few people signed in, so if the second name called, if you can queue up and be ready to speak. First up, we have Amy Powell, followed by Gia Brown.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the commission. My name is Amy Powell, and I am a volunteer election observer. I observed mail ballot processing for eight days during the presidential primary. I also observed here during 2022 and 2020. This year, the system was better organized and more transparent. I'd like to describe a few of the procedures I observed that are particularly key to the security of mail voting. To start, when a mail ballot is returned to the registrar's office, the barcode on the envelope is scanned into the computer system. Once that happens, the system will not allow the voter to vote for a second time. Next, signature verification. Workers authenticate the signature on every single ballot envelope, and they separate out any that don't meet the state's standards. It's a painstaking process, and it's clearly visible from the public observation area. Chain of custody. At each processing step, workers make a written accounting of ballots and lock any ballots that are removed. Observers can easily see who's performing each task and that they're properly trained, because all of the staff have a name tag that's color-coded and matches the tray of ballots that they're authorized to work on. Ms. Burgess did a great job managing the election. Remarkably, she was also able to foster an atmosphere of pride and mutual respect among the staff. They did a great job working diligently to carry out a legal and secure election. Please understand that a no vote on this canvass is an attempt to invalidate tens of thousands of ballots that were cast in good faith by voters who followed the rules. That would be a grave injustice. Many people in the audience today are wearing blue. That's to symbolize their confidence that this was a free and fair election. On their behalf, I ask every commissioner to uphold the will of the people and to make a commitment to freedom by voting yes on the campus of the presidential primary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Gia Brown, followed by Stephanie Larude.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Gaia Brown. I'm a 23-year resident of Reno, and I've been a voter since 1968, when I proudly cast my presidential ballot for Richard Nixon, my father having told me that I would never go wrong voting Republican. Well, I did gradually move to the Democratic side, but I'm a fiscal conservative. And living in New Jersey and Illinois, I always supported my Republican congressperson. And here in Nevada, I've also at times voted for the Republican, such as Brian Sandoval. You know, we started the meeting this morning, saying the Pledge of Allegiance, "to one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." That's not just the people we agree with. That's why the job of the registrar of voters is so important. That person assures a fair and accurate election with access for every registered voter and also the certitude of the results. And yet, there are some who want to discourage certain classes of people from voting, who want to subject the results to human error by hand counting, who want to make perhaps the job of the registrar of voters so onerous that that person would quit, like the previous registrar. So I'm here today to say thank you to Carrie Anne Burgess. She's taken on the task that has been performed well in the past, and she's determined to do it even better. And I'm asking the commissioners today to honor the voters of Washoe County and uphold the democratic process by certifying the result of the 2024 primary election. Thank you.
Thank you.
Stephanie Larude, followed by Julie M.
Good morning. My name is Stephanie Larude. I'm a longtime Washoe County resident, engaged citizen, and proud graduate of the inaugural Washoe County Leadership Academy. As a graduate of WCLA, I'm fully aware of all that Washoe County is responsible for, which is why I'm intentionally keeping my comments short today, because you've got other stuff to do. I respect your time. I'm here today to request that you certify our presidential primary results. I'm here representing the silent majority, many of us wearing blue today, and I'm here to remind you of the support that you have from the majority of Washoe County citizens. And we're here to support at the ballot box, too, for those that certify the election results, I guess. I'm here also to verbalize my support for Carrie Anne Burgess and her team. That is a hard job, particularly in this very difficult climate, and to thank her for stepping into a contentious position that has seen much turnover due in part to the vitriol of the vocal minority. The majority of Washoe County residents believe that our current voting system is reliable and secure, and considering any other method of voting at this critical time in our democracy would be egregious. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Julie M., followed by Roger Skye. Julie M. Okay, Roger Skye, followed by Barbara Twitchell.
Well, I'm Roger Shumay. Can I go?
Yes, you may. I'm sorry.
That's fine. Everybody gets wrong.
In recent years, an alarming number of my fellow citizens have come to believe that our elections have been rigged, stolen, sabotaged, or choose your own adjective, rife with improprieties, and have come to distrust their results and that their outcomes should therefore be denied. However, during the many elections in which I was a partisan poll watcher or vote count observer, I saw nothing deceptive or untoward, and am perfectly prepared to swear that under oath. I did note, however, the objections, questions, and complaints from other observers, the overwhelming majority of which I believe were due to either misunderstanding the processes and procedures, or due to outright misinformation. Let me say this as clearly as possible. If we refuse to accept the results of our elections, what's the point of having elections at all? Don't get me wrong, there were some aspects of the election process that cry out for modification, cleaning up, clarification, merely tweaking, in a way that those doubters may again come to trust our elections and accept their outcomes. Voting to deny certification will accomplish nothing except to waste the commission's time, the registrar's time, and we voters' time, energy, and attention, time that would be better spent making changes and ironing out any wrinkles in preparation for the primary in June and the general in November. Additionally, refusing to certify will provide public relations and legislative fodder to those whose main purpose is cast doubt on any elections their candidate fails to win. So please, I implore you, just certify this election and get on with the important items of making sure that the next ones are as clean, transparent, most of all, understandable to us, the voters. In closing, please give Carrie Anne Burgess a chance to get her feet wet in her new position. The politics and bureaucracy of Washoe County government take a while to get used to, and I speak from experience. And speaking specifically to Commissioner Clark.
You must speak to the whole board.
Okay, to the whole. One of the commissioners mentioned that the caucus was smooth, it was run efficiently, everybody did everything they were supposed to. It was only one party, and there was, for all intents and purposes, only one candidate. If that's the way it works, well, of course, they're all going to run easily and smoothly. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Certify this thing.
Barbara Twitchell, followed by Eric Larude.
Good day to the commissioners. This is an impromptu speech coming from the heart rather than a piece of paper in front of me. I, first of all, want to say that every vote does count, and I think we believe it should, all of us. We just have different ideas about the best way to do that. I have run caucus, I'm sorry, caucuses in the past. I also have been an observer of the count, an observer of the actual voting process, and an election day worker. So I feel like I've pretty much got an overview of all of these processes. Caucuses are a pain in the neck, and they are difficult, and they are, they're limiting. And that's the worst part of them, is that they're limiting, because we are a 24-hour, seven-day-a-week town, and not everybody can get there on a specific day. We also happen to be a town that has people who cannot get to places easily. Maybe they're disabled, maybe they have other transportation difficulties, whatever, because the caucus requires you to be at a specific place at a specific day. It is too limiting for such a large town as we are now, county, sorry. I have observed during the election processes, very, very efficient, well-done elections. I never, in all the times that I have sat there observing or participating in it, have I seen any kind of untoward things going on. I think it's been well-done, and I think the idea of the voting by mail is very efficient for a lot of people who have children to watch, who have jobs to go to, who work more than one job, who can't easily get to a poll. It's convenient, and it's efficient. I would also like to welcome Carrie Anne to her new job and say, "You're a brave soul, Carrie Anne," because it is a difficult job. I had to be escorted when I was working here to come to observing, because we, my husband and I, were subject to threats, and that was not very comfortable. And that was just, I was a volunteer observing for one day. It's not It's not exactly easy for these people who have to come here day after day, and we've lost some good people in the past because of it. Please, vote to certify this election, because it was well done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Derek Morse, followed by Paul Leonard.
Good morning. Good morning, county commissioners. My name is Eric Larude. I am a third-generation Washoe County resident. I'm here today to ask that you certify the presidential primary results. There is no basis to not certify the results. I'm also here to register my support for interim registrar Carrie Anne Burgess and her team and the registrar's office. Please continue to support her and the team. This is a crucial year. We need steady leadership in the registrar's office. Ms. Burgess is the right person for the job. She has the qualifications, the training, and the experience. It is not time to be thinking of replacing her, nor is it time to be thinking of revising how we conduct our elections. As far as I understand, mail ballot process has worked very fine and very well for many years, and I think it will continue to work fine. And I didn't know I-80 was such a windy, mountainous road. But anyway, please do not be swayed by the rhetoric and antics of the vocal minority asking or suggesting or implying that you should not certify the results, or that you should have someone else be the registrar, or that you should radically revise how you run elections, especially going into June and November. They are not speaking for the majority of the 500,000 Washoe County residents. They do not want what is best for our community. They want what is best for a narrow group. They want to be as disruptive and intimidating as possible to interrupt you from completing your work. They want to make you as uncomfortable as possible so that you will quit your positions. Two registers have quit since 2022 because of boogeymen, quite potentially. Please do not let their rhetoric and antics get the best of you. We need order, not chaos. Thank you for your service to our county.
Thank you.
Next up is Derek Morse, followed by Paul Leonard.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. Good morning. First, I'd like to thank the registrar's office, all the staff, all the volunteers for the hard work they do. I've done this for a couple of election cycles myself, and I know how difficult it is, so they are to be thanked for all their efforts. This morning, you may have some folks that will ask you not to certify this election. If there's credible evidence that there were problems with the election, to the extent that the outcome, as currently determined, is not valid, then by all means, don't certify. But lacking that, why would you not certify? It's your ministerial duty to do these things, so I would encourage you to do that. Not doing that only encourages this narrative that our elections are unsafe, they're not secure, and this kind of stuff, and that is not good for our society, for our county, for our entire country. So I would encourage you not to go along those lines, again, unless you have real evidence. So I encourage you to go ahead and certify the vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Leonard, followed by Nancy Potzweld Baba.
My name is Paul Leonard. Greetings to the commission. I have lived in Nevada since 1998, when I came over from Mississippi. People told me that Nevada was the Mississippi of the West. So far, in terms of at least the integrity of the structural workers in elections, I have not found that to be true. Mississippi was a corrupt southern autocracy. This remains a republic, granted mostly a plutocracy with democratic features, but it is essential that we protect every vestige of democracy that has been won by generations past. People have died for the franchise. I have no doubt that that will happen again in the future at some point, unfortunately. We fought a civil war over it. Never again. An election is an election. Certify the results. I don't have a dog in this race. I belong to neither of the two major parties. Someone tried to do me a favor by shoving me into the Democratic Party. I'm not, and never have been, not since LBJ used to fry kids in Vietnam, not today, when someone fries kids in Gaza. Thank you for your attention.
Nancy Potzweld Baba, followed by Penny Brock.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and the rest of the commission. My name is Nancy Potzweld Baba. I've lived in Washoe County since 1986 and have observed the election process on many occasions. This time, I was poll watching, observing on election day at the Sparks Library. Everything went smoothly. Everybody was welcomed. Everybody was accommodated quickly. There were some people that didn't have the proper identification to register, because somebody from out of state wanted to register. They found a way of using other documents that she had to make sure that she was able to cast a vote. There was a man who showed up angry because he was an independent, that he could not vote in the primary, and he was told he could register just for the day as one of the major parties to vote for the candidate of his choice. He chose not to, but everybody was welcome. People brought in their ballots to drop off. The ballots were stamped. They put them into the drop box. Everything was run smoothly, and the staff worked together very well. Please certify the results of this election. I think our process is great, and welcome Carrie Anne.
Thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Sandy Tibbet.
Penny Brock, for the record, please put my comments in the record per NRS. Good morning, commissioners. So, America depends on its election process. I object to the presidential primary, because we've always held it by the caucuses with the Democrat Party and the Republican Party. I don't know why this was put into the arena of having our registrar of voters oversee this. It cost a lot of money. I believe the last, at one of the commission meetings, they asked for $1.7 million to pay for the workers. They also asked for 80 new drop boxes at about $125,000, but that goes for all elections. But we don't know what it costs to print the ballots. We don't know what it costs to send out the ballots. We don't know what it costs for the postage paid return. How much did this presidential primary cost us? Number two, this was foisted on as by the 2023 legislature. No Republicans voted for it. I don't know that it ever came before our county commission, for their input by your lobbyists, how you felt about it. I don't recall, as a person that often attends the commission, hearing about it. So for that reason, I do not support the outcome of this presidential primary because of all the reasons I've mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sandy Tibbet, followed by Janet Butcher.
Sandy Tibbet, for the record, and for the record, I didn't get the memo on the blue. And we pledge allegiance under God. And yes, I agree. Please certify this election. It is probably the fairest election this county has ever run. No reason to cheat if Trump's not on the ballot, right? So I volunteered at the O'Brien Caucus location, and I want to express my gratitude to our awesome community. I want to give you huge thanks to you, to all of the volunteers who stepped up to assist our Washoe GOP office, and to pull off a record-breaking caucus, and to all the voters who endured long lines and the cold to cast their vote for their candidate. We would have had more polling locations with a longer timeframe to vote, but we were restricted by the county. It would have been even better. By doing so, we sent a huge message to our elected officials of our great state, and that one, we want Trump. That's one message. And the second message was, our county can run a cost-effective and transparent one-day in-person election with paper ballots and voter ID efficiently, even with the obstacles and the lies our state and local media threw at us to cause chaos and confusion. I am so proud of our community volunteers who donated their time and energy to process over 12,000 voters, 12,000 and plus, in approximately three hours, at 16 different caucus locations, and completed counting those ballots that very same night. Imagine what our community could do if we actually had the cooperation of our elected officials of our own county and state by providing additional polling sites and paid poll workers. I also want to take a moment to thank the Office of the Nevada Secretary of State and all the Democrats who put forth and passed the bill requiring the state of Nevada to hold a non-binding and very expensive presidential primary. Rumor is, it's $5.2 million spent. $5.2 million was nearly wasted. I say nearly wasted because it wasn't a total loss. Your incompetencies managed to wake up a whole bunch of Trump supporters who are now paying very close attention to you and your corrupt business dealings. The mass mailing of ballots without Trump's name was priceless and a huge win for us. As you are well aware, it motivated a large number of folks to reach out to the GOP office and the ROV office to find out what the heck was going on. It was great. Our community and all other communities of our state are tired of the wasteful spending and fraudulent conduct of our state and local officials, and we will be making our voices heard at the ballot box. Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Scott Finley, and I have a document to distribute for Ms. Butcher.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim along with the documents per NRS. While it may be reported that the Presidential Preference Primary is more accessible to the general public, and that recent election reforms are popular among voters, it is not being reported that the vast majority of voters who have moved into Nevada from other states were not familiar about the caucus. The information that accompanied the universal ballot stated a lie, that the Presidential Preference Primary was replacing the caucus. The sample ballot also alluded to this, but with different verbiage. Many folks took this lie to be true, since it was perpetrated by the registrar of voters and/or the Secretary of State, along with the former Democrat governor and Democrat-led legislature, AB 126. This lie was also stated on the ROV's website. This was brought to the attention at two separate commission meetings. Neither the commissioners, county manager, nor the ROV responded. The caucus lives. The envelope that the unsolicited ballot arrived in contains a graphical error. Mark selections on the ballot in blue, in black, in, it should have been ink. The envelope that was provided to return the ballot had a hole in it. The secrecy sleeve page was pink for Republican and blue for Democrat. The vote may be secret, but obviously not so secret as to which party, when it is being passed through the mail system or anywhere, it may be handled. I heard reports of duplicate ballots, no ballot at all, and registrations being switched. Some were completely no longer on the voter rolls. Exactly what is the other affiliation? No ballot tracking. Now that is suspect. I personally had my date of registration changed on 11/15, which was the day that I had to get my replacement driver's license. The form from the DMV clearly states that if you do not want your registration updated, do not fill out the form. I did not, and kept the form. Now, for the caucus, what an uplifting experience. I have participated in many caucuses throughout the years, and this one was by far the best. Neighbors seeing neighbors, people signing up to be county delegates. No delegates to the Republican National Convention are garnered from the Presidential Preference Primary. The best part, it did not cost the taxpayers of Nevada $5 million. God bless the republic.
Scott Finley, followed by Renee Rosentus, and it looks like there are documents to be distributed.
Actually, one of the commissioners, one for the record. Please enter my comment and this document into the record pursuant to NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I'm a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the United States Air Force. The Washoe County Board of Commissioners must reject the canvas of vote due to the caucus indirectly revealing inherent errors in the Presidential Preference Primary. I was the site coordinator for the O'Brien Middle School Caucus site. The registrar of voters produced and gave us five hard copies containing a list of all Republicans that were registered to vote prior to the January 8th deadline. During the caucus, we came across over 80 Republicans whose names were not on the hard copies. Out of the roughly 1,200 voters credentialed and verified at O'Brien, a minimum of 7% were disenfranchised. A 93% accuracy rate is not an acceptable standard in any industry, let alone elections. This commission should ask Carrie Anne Burgess and have her answer if the hard copy she provided for all the caucus sites in Washoe County is the same data that the ROV used for the Presidential Preference Primary. If not, why? In addition, the U.S. Postal Service held a meeting on Tuesday about moving the Reno Processing and Distribution Center from Reno, Nevada to Sacramento, California as part of its 10-year plan to modernize mail delivery nationally. At this meeting, I asked the USPS representatives if they can explain the entire mail-in ballot process step by step, from initial distribution of the ballot to post-delivery of the ballot for counting, and what safeguards and quality control do they have in place to ensure chain of custody for mail-in ballots, to ensure chain of custody for mail-in ballots is never compromised? The response I received by the USPS representative is that they have no idea. The chain of custody belongs to the county and your county clerks until it reaches the postal service. At that time, when the postal service takes custody of that, it becomes mail, just like you would handle a card or letter with Grandma's Christmas card or birthday card. That's the same way we would handle it. Let me restate that. Mail-in ballots are handled with the utmost respect like Grandma's Christmas card or birthday card. Serendipitously, none other than Carrie Anne Burgess was present at this meeting. She was visibly upset and gave public comments stating, "It really bothers me that they're thinking about putting this in Sacramento. We already have enough issues getting our ballots on time in our facility, especially on weekends. We do not need to make it harder by getting them from California." I just found out about this meeting through an accident. The Board of Governors of the United States Postal Service consists of 11 members. Amber Reynolds is a member, which she is the founder of the National Vote at Home Institute and Strategy Rose. Yet neither her nor any of the other board members thought it was important to inform the United States Postal Representatives about the potential impact this could have on mail-in ballots nationally. Sometimes--
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Can you please call the next person? Thank you.
Renee Rosentus, followed by Buddy Miller.
Renee Rosentus, for the record, this is from my heart, and also, I participated in the caucus, and I can tell you that was just historic, to see all the people show up, that showed up for that, and the thanks we got from the people in line. I mean, they froze outside. They didn't complain. I was directing traffic and helping look up precinct numbers for them to try to make the line go faster. They were great. It was fun. And I just want to say, I think that you should certify this election, because-- And I just want to say, I think that you should certify this election because you get nothing out of it. There's nothing, it was just a beauty contest for the PPP. It was a popularity contest. You got no delegates. It cost us taxpayers millions of dollars, and that was not the case with the caucus. The caucus was paid for the candidates that were on the ballot and the party. And this is what we have done here for years. And we need to go back to it. I was part of the whole process. I stayed, I helped count the ballots. We tallied up the ballots. We had, you know, I tallied it up, another person did. If there were any mistakes, we started over. People were able to stay for the counting. It was very transparent. No one had to leave. They were allowed to stay for the whole process. The voting, the counting of the ballots, and the tally, and the announcement of who won. So this was so exciting to be able to get the tallies at the end of this process. We needed more time. Two and a half hours is not long enough for the caucus. And it is true that it does disenfranchise some people, especially the disabled, and that's why I took it upon myself to get permission to take the ballots to the disabled that qualified for the American Disability Act. And they were so grateful to have me there. And they want me to come back. I was invited to Super Bowl Sunday. And it was just, they were so grateful that they could participate. And so there were a lot of issues as I was an observer for the last election, and as you all know, because I've been very vocal about it. And I'm glad that they were able to see the signatures this time, and all the monitors weren't all squashed together so that you couldn't see anything, and that's what they did when I was there. And I complained about it, nothing was done about it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Buddy Miller, followed by George Lee.
My name is Buddy Miller. I'm a registered voter here in Washoe County, and I've been an observer of the polls and ballot counting since 2004 for the Democratic Party. I want to thank you all for allowing me to speak, and I'm asking the board, like others have, to approve the proposed declaration of canvas that's attached to the staff report and to certify the vote. It's evident that the polling and the tabulation of the votes was done correctly and independently, and there's no reason to suspect that there's any problem or anything amiss as a result of the tabulation. I'd also like to congratulate the poll workers and ballot counters, both temporary and regular staff. I, what I felt was an honor on Election Day to observe the polling at the Washoe County Administration Complex that was here, and also at Spanish Springs Library and North Valley's Library. What I found were just incredibly competent teams, folks who knew what they were doing, there were some newbies, and those people did receive some guidance by their colleagues. But without question, there was no, without question, each of the members of the polling team knew exactly what they were doing and were very helpful to the voters, took their time, and were willing to explain anything to the voter that the voter didn't understand. And I thought that that relationship was superb. And then finally, I wanted to give my support to our new interim registrar, Carrie Ann Burgess. You know, she was pointed to her position just a month ago, and in that 30 or 31 days since, she has experienced her first election cycle. She managed to lead a team to run a very smooth voting process, and I think everyone was just really impressed with the way that the election worked. And I think she grabbed the bull by the horns, and she was able to make it work, and we are really proud of her. So I thank the board, and I hope that you will certify the election. Thanks.
Thank you. George Lee, followed by Chris Garvey.
Under the National Voter Rights Act, which was put in place during the Obama administration, the federal government, I know that we believe that the states are supposed to designate and run elections according to the way that the legislature has commanded, right? However, any irregularities that are not resolved before you sign off on this election, any irregularities, put you in direct peril of being sued federally. So if there are any irregularities, I don't know of any, well, I've seen some. I'd like that the people who weren't listed in the list of Republican voters who were, you know, attended the caucus, I saw it personally. But if there were any irregularities that were not addressed prior to you signing off, you become culpable, and therefore you can be sued directly. I'm not going to do it. I'm not behind anything. I'm just reporting to you what the law says.
Chris Garvey, followed by Joni Hammond.
Thank you, Chris Garvey, for the record. I had come this morning mainly to hear the conversation. I think what disappoints me the most, though, is after your voter registrar standing up here saying that there was some issues and that she takes full responsibility for it, there were no questions about what steps have been taken to ensure this doesn't happen again, because it's the second time we've had a problem with our sample ballots. And I, at first, when my husband received his, but I didn't receive mine, I thought perhaps it was the mail service. But now I have to wonder, was I disenfranchised at the registrar's office? I hadn't opted out of my mail-in ballot, but I still did not receive a sample ballot. Also, one of the things that is concerning is the fact that we do have a situation that could greatly impact our state at the Vassar mail office. Having that mail sent to Sacramento to be processed will not only impact Reno with a delay in mail, but it will also delay mail for our rural areas that are serviced by that mail center on Vassar. And it was, like the gentleman before said, Ms. Burgess attended the meeting not knowing, finding out last minute, and she was visibly concerned and very upset about what would happen with chain of custody. So these are questions I wish that the commissioners would be asking, so that the public does have a sense that you are trying to make sure that our voting systems are secure, that there's a chain of custody. There may be a chain of custody within this building, but what happens from the time it arrives at the person's house and they drop it in one of the boxes that you've purchased or in the mail, and then it finally makes its way back here? Those are the gray areas that people are concerned about. And without any discussion, you leave people to wonder if you even care. And so I strongly urge this commission to start asking some hard questions and finding out what is our voter registrar doing to ensure that the public's vote is secure. Thank you.
Thank you. Joni Hammond, followed by Pam Roberts.
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I'm Joni Hammond. I worked all eight days of the PPP, and I also worked at the caucus. I did not see or hear of any threats at either the caucus or the PPP. All this talk today of threats, if real, need to be documented and investigated by law enforcement. Otherwise, the people need to stop making these ridiculous claims and talk about something else. The PPP costs the taxpayers millions of dollars, as we've heard from others today. The caucus costs the taxpayers nothing. The PPP took over 14 days, the caucus took two and a half hours. There's universal distrust in mail-in ballots, the Dominion machines, and Washoe County elections. There's confusion about the caucus, no distrust. At the PPP, I observed myself, this isn't hearsay, multiple people bringing in two ballots with their name on them. Multiple people brought in ballots that were addressed to people no longer at the address. Multiple people came in with ballots of dead people. Why are these ballot rolls not being cleaned? If we look at just the money, I remain confused why we spend millions of dollars for an elongated process versus spending less money on a one-day election. Florida does a one-day election. The country of France does a one-day election. We need to do this also in one day.
Thank you. Pam Roberts, followed by Bruce Schmidt. Pam Roberts?
Oh, here she comes.
Good morning, Pam Roberts, for the record. I participated in poll observing for, I think, about four or five occasions this time and over the past few years. And my experience has been similar to what some other folks have said in terms of how well-trained the poll workers were, how much they facilitated and helped every potential voter to get through the process. And specifically, I want to address something I saw that I think speaks well of the way the system works. And that was, I was observing actually just outside here at the county complex for the early voting, and there was an elderly gentleman who showed up, and when they looked him up in the system, it looked like he'd already voted. And he didn't remember that he had already voted. He was pretty sure he hadn't already voted. And they were like, well, that's what the system says, so let's find out what's going on. So they, the staff that's out in this area went and talked to staff inside where all the ballots are being collected. And because of the way the system has been set up by precinct, they were actually able to locate his ballot that had been turned in with his signature. And then they called him over, and they said, I can't, I don't know what his name was, we'll call him Mr. Smith. "Mr. Smith, is this your signature?" And he looked at the ballot, and he said, "You know, that is my signature. I am so sorry." And it was not an intentional thing at all. We're talking, you know, I'm over 60, there's quite a few people in this audience that are over 60, and sometimes we forget things. It's not intentional at all. And the system was set up in such a way that this person had been able to vote, that the system caught the fact that he'd already voted, and they were able to verify that he was, in fact, the person who voted. Now, it made it a little easy because he was literally right here at this location. So I don't know if there's a system in place, and my suggestion is that if that happens to someone who goes to vote at the Spanish Springs Library, for example, or the Yellow Library, that they can, that staff is able to take a picture of that ballot that shows Mr. Smith's signature. They can show Mr. Smith via telephones, "Hey, this is what we have," so that they don't literally have to go to another place to vote or have to come all the way down here. But I think the system works, and I'm very proud of our county workers. Thank you.
Thank you. Bruce Schmidt, followed by Alan Munson.
My name is Bruce Schmidt. I am a voter in Washoe County. I would like to thank you for this opportunity. I also like to say I don't blame you for the creation of the presidential primary or the move of the post office, issues that need to be talked about, obviously not here. Over the last couple of years, several years, there's been some real stuff in the news about voting and voter fraud and all of this. And so I'm retired, I got curious, so I decided to go and observe voting here. And I observed, I think, about a half a dozen polling locations, and universally, I was impressed with the competence of the people. They obviously were well-trained, they were friendly, helpful. I did not see any voters leaving unhappy. I think it worked just fine. Whatever problems came up, they handled them. They found out, you know, they'd call the registrar's office if necessary, and it was all worked out. I also then found out you're able to observe the ballot counting from the mail-in ballots, so I did that one morning, just to see. And again, very impressive. It's well-organized for an observer to see, the different parts of the room are labeled as to what's happening. You're able to see ballots come in, signature verification, open the envelopes, sort them, open the envelopes, take them out, hand them off, chain of custody, people signing as they receive them, counting them up, signing when they pass them along. Extremely effective. I was just very impressed, and quite frankly, I think you folks, because these are your workers, you guys should really be very proud of what they do and what they did. So I'm looking forward to the next election. I think you have a great election team here, and you should give them all the support you can. Needless to say, I do agree, you should go ahead and just certify this. If there are disagreements with whether there's a primary or a caucus, you know, I have an opinion, probably doesn't matter, but it's to be discussed somewhere else. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alan Munson, followed by Sho Macbeth.
Hi, my name's Alan Munson, a resident of Washoe County, and I appreciate you all for your service. I didn't plan to come up here and say anything, I just wanted to listen, so it's going to kind of be off the cuff, but I did participate in the caucus, and I would support doing that versus, I just think there's so many issues regarding mail-in ballots and sending it out, you know, you've got, it costs five million, I guess, around $5 million. I know some have said that there's, you know, no problem with the counting, but, you know, it takes, you know, the whole process there for, you know, the presidential primary, you know, it takes 14 days. We knew the results that night in the caucus. So, you know, I just support that kind of process, and, you know, we were there, we had people checking our counting, and it was something that we wanted to do legitimately and fairly and honestly, and so I saw that it could happen. It was difficult, you know, there was like, I was at one in Sparks, Sepulvede Elementary School, and I think 750 people came, and we only had two hours, and the lines were very long. But I noticed that people were enjoying talking to other friends, making new friends, and so it worked. It would have been helpful to have more people checking in, I think we had seven, you know, if we had maybe 14, we could have sped the process up that way. But anyways, so I just encourage that you would consider that process for the caucus, because, you know, it did work, and we knew the results that night, and it didn't cost us any money. Thank you for hearing my words.
Thank you. Sho Macbeth, followed by Darla Lee.
Ready? Are you? I'm here because we are, damn. I'm here because we are, damn. Yeah, sorry about that. I'm here because of, we're still having this conversation of election fraud since, like, back in 2020 with the Biden election. I think this whole pattern just shows that people do not care about evidence, like any actual evidence, other than making one that is more considered upon a conclusion, a conclusion that there is fraud. This whole idea of fraud has been there for, which Trump has pushed since before the election even started back in 2020, and it is happening still again and again with the MAGA crowd. And this is kind of the same logic held by those who are likes of flat-earthers or creationists or other holders of pseudoscience. And because of that, I don't think this very serious, illegal body should take it seriously in any real capacity, and that Trump's crimes should be prosecuted as those who have been held power to us, well, the power that we gave to them should be held to the utmost accountability. And, you know, it's not just a Republican thing either. Joe Biden, right now, should be held accountable for the crimes which he is complicit right now in occupied Palestine. And that ethnic cleansing of these people that's been happening for over decades has been something which several presidents have been for decades, including Barack, Bush, Reagan, they've all been complicit, and they all should be held accountable for this. Nevada deserves to have their voices, those who are anti-ethnic cleansing, anti-ethnic supremacism, anti-injustice, they should have their voices heard, that we do not stand for this, either criminals here at home or the criminals that we support in other parts of the world, including the House of Saud, including...
Can you bring your remarks back to the canvas of the vote, sir?
All right. Then I have nothing else to speak about. Free Palestine.
Darla Lee?
Good morning, Darla Lee, for the record, and please record my comments. Number one, I just take offense at being called by certain people at this gathering the vociferous minority. Number one, I would like to know how anybody knows who's in the majority or who's in the minority. I do know that there has been a very obvious majority of people that want voter ID, because there's been polls on that. But to be called the minority or the so-called vociferous minority, that's just offensive. I would like to echo the comments of several people about how well the caucus went. My husband and I were side coordinators for one, and it was a very encouraging affair, I would have to say. There were people that were extremely appreciative that they were allowed to have this process, meet their neighbors, have a caucus, know the results. So in any case, I do have some concerns that have been brought to my attention, rumors, if you will, that there is a certain, how can I put this, that certain people want to absolutely get rid of the machines but go to all-male voting, and I would definitely oppose that. I think that would, obviously, as many Democrats used to say, would be prone to fraud. So, and the other thing that seems to be in the offering is that the signature on our, for the elections, will no longer be captured on paper but on a signature pad on a new intake tablet. This is a question, will the tablet also validate the signature if that does happen? And according to people that have experience in this, is that any time electric equipment is changed or programs upgraded, it takes six months to work out the kinks. So if this is a possibility for our elections in the future, I think it would behoove us to certainly not be thinking of doing it in this current year. There's an absolute huge potential for error and manipulation if this was to be the case, something to think about. Thank you.
Thank you. That's everybody in chambers, but we do have Yolanda Knack in Incline Village. Okay.
I'll start over, since I was muted. The PPP complaints should have been investigated. Second, there was a lot of confusion over the PPP. The PPP mailer said there was, essentially said that there was no other voting, which was incorrect, because we had the caucus. I'd like to clarify that disabled people were allowed to participate in the caucus. They had to just contact their county party. The caucus did not have any cost, there was no universal ballot mailing, no ballot harvesting, and fortunately, it did have voter ID. So the caucus, I can tell you, was, I can guarantee you, it was an honest and fair election, unlike the PPP, because the PPP had universal mailing of ballots, ballot harvesting, and these things are open doors for fraud. So then also, the PPP costs $5 million, so that's a waste of $5 million. It also did not provide delegates for the Republican candidates, so I'm not sure why they bothered with it. In the past, it's always been Democrat and Republicans using the caucus, which would cost our state much less money. And of course, the caucus has been going on for decades. Please return to 100% caucus. As far as certifying the election, I haven't heard exactly the complaints that they've been investigated, so that needs to be done for sure. Thank you so much.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in? Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, we'll go back to the board. Are there any board questions or comments? Commissioner Clark?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want everybody to listen closely here, it might surprise you. I agree with just about everything that every person said here today, just about everything. There's a couple of exceptions, I'll get to those in a minute, but right now, I agree that the registrar voters is an honest, competent person, doing a good job. I agree that the poll watchers, the counters, I'm not an election denier by any stretch of the imagination. I'm a one-trick pony. I got one idea, and the idea is this. As somebody who's actually run a county department here, the voter rolls are an area that I find very, very much in contention for me, and I want to make sure that those voter rolls are cleaned up. I just had a meeting about a month ago with the registrar voters in Carson City. Carson City's a much smaller county than we are. He's taken about 8,000 or 9,000 names off the voter rolls in a small county. This county has got voter rolls that need to be addressed. I'm going to use the analogy of a car. You might have a car with, a perfect car with air in the tires and the lubrication is good, and the radiator's good, and everything's working fine in the car, but if you put in bad gas, you've got a problem. I want to go upstream from the voter, registrar voters, and I want to go to the rolls. I've got right here, and I'm going to give it to the clerk to put in the county a record, for the last eight years, a friend of mine who moved to Australia eight years ago, sold his house three or four years ago, we can look it up and fact-check me on it, name of Dwayne Woodard, got his sample ballot and his ballot coming to my house. This isn't the first time, I'm not, this isn't coming in and talking about this the first time. I've shared this, when I was the assessor, with the last two registrar voters. I'm worried about the rolls, that's what I'm worried about. I have no, I have no faith in the election rolls. I think everybody has a right to vote, I don't care if you're wearing a blue shirt or a red tie or whatever political persuasion you are, if the rolls aren't accurate, the outcome won't be accurate. You can have the best recipe in the world, but if you use adulterated ingredients, it's not going to come out right. And that's where I'm coming from. So, just saying. I'm going to walk these over now, put them on the record. Again, this is the third time in eight years in this room that I've brought this to the attention. So here's one problem, I don't know how many other problems. Does anybody else in this room want to get another three minutes and come back and tell me that they have perfect confidence in the voter rolls? I can tell you this, this county has the ability, through the recorder's office, through the treasurer's office, through the assessor's office, through the clerk, to clean up about 90% of these voter rolls, and nobody seems to have the political will to have accurate rolls. How can you get anywhere, you know, the observers are doing a great job, the counters are doing a great job, let's just say the machines are perfect, everything's perfect, but the rolls are not perfect. That's where I'm coming from. Can you understand that? I don't care who you vote for, what political persuasion you have, you've got to agree that if the rolls aren't accurate, you're going to have a problem. And that's where I'm coming from. End of story for me. I'm going to walk these over right now. But again, I had a meeting with other counties, other registrar voters, other clerks in Carson City, and they've been able to figure this out. How come we can't? Are we the slow ones in the state? Thank you.
Looking to other board members. Commissioner Andrea.
Thank you. I agree, actually, with Commissioner Clark, so you can note that, that the voter rolls are certainly one of the biggest priorities. It's just like any technology, you know, what you have in terms of going in is what you have going out. But my understanding and speaking with the Secretary of State and with many other jurisdictions is the V-RAM system that is in place is going to make a major difference in the upcoming election. I have no idea, and I'm just going to ask a question about the V-RAMs, if I may. County manager, I'm not sure if you want me to direct the question to you, and my question is this, was the V-RAMs actually used in the PPP?
No.
Okay. Will the V-RAMs be implemented for the upcoming election?
It is scheduled to be available for the primary in June.
Okay.
That will be the first time it will be in effect, and you're correct, the primary focus of it is to clean up the voter rolls.
Thank you. May I have a follow-up?
Of course.
Madam Chair? I would like to get clarification in terms of compliance for the action that is in front of this body, and my specific question is related to, again, Mr. Edwards, I'm asking if you could give clarification to the scope to which we are voting and the consideration thereof of the information that was shared by the interim ROV, and I may reserve a follow-up for the interim ROV as well as a question. Thank you.
Thank you. As per the agenda item and the abstract that you've been given here today, what you are doing, and I'm just going to summarize, is voting whether or not these are the accurate and official results of the presidential primary, as reported to you by your registrar of voters. If you wish to have any follow-up on any details about that, errors or anything like that, that's a question for the interim registrar, but that's what you're doing. Are these the official and accurate results or not?
Thank you. Madam Chair, may I have a follow-up to the interim ROV, please?
Yes. Yes.
Nice meeting you.
Nice to meet you, too.
Based on the information that's been provided and the framework to which the compliance in all regards, from A to Z, with PPP and the election process, were there any irregularities that would actually be important for the information that you've provided us, you know, on the basis of these results?
No, no, ma'am.
No irregularities at all?
Not that I'm aware of. No, and I work with my staff very closely.
Okay.
We've been going over these results to make sure that they are correct.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Not at this moment. Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Other than a big thank you to Ms. Burgess and her team and to all of our exceptional poll workers, I'm happy to make a motion when you're ready.
Okay, wonderful. Commissioner Clark, I have you sign in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Again, as I said, I agree with most everything that was said, I have a couple of exceptions, and I want to talk about that real quick. I think it was the third generation Nevadids kind of poo-pooed the idea that Highway 80 is a dangerous road. It's a mountainous road, there's hundreds and hundreds of accidents a year that happen between here and Sacramento, there's forest fires, there's avalanches, there's truck wrecks, there's snow, there's, and if you drive Highway 80 as many times as I have over the Sierras, you see many, many, many little wooden crosses along the side of the road where people's lives have been taken. So I'll take exception to anybody who thinks that Highway 80 isn't a dangerous road. And the mail's mostly delivered at night, so it's harder to see at night, so just, there's just a lot of other things that come into play rather than taking a Sunday drive. So that may impede the ability to get our ballots back and forth, okay? And the second exception is when somebody wants to bring in international politics to our voter rolls, that's an area that I think is a far stretch as well. But again, I've been talking about this for two years, three years, about the voter rolls. I saw the problem, I saw that the county had the ability to fix it based on tax rolls, assessor rolls, recorder's office, the clerk's office, we have the result, we have the resources to do this, and now I just hear, now, just now, that finally, for this next election, we're going to do this. I've been talking for at least eight years, I brought these ballots in here before, and it's still incorrect. So when I see something that's been brought to the county's attention, and this is two and three registrar voters ago, we can't blame the new registrar voters over this, but that's the kind of mismanagement we've had with the voter rolls, and that's the epicenter of integrity of elections. Forget machines, forget the counting, forget all that stuff. If you don't have accurate records to start with, you've got nothing. That's where I'm coming from. I'm a one-trick pony, I'm going to keep beating that drum until it's fixed, and that's that. But now, maybe it's... But now maybe it's going to be tried out in this June election. Why didn't we fix this stuff years ago? Thank you.
Okay, well, Commissioner Garcia, if you're ready for a motion, I think it's time.
I move to approve the proposed Washoe County Board of Accounting Commission's Declaration and Canvas of the Vote and Order for the 2024 Presidential Primary Election.
And I'll second that. Is there any questions on the motion from the board? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And if you'll record your vote there. And the motion passes, three to one. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to item five. Mr. Manager.
Item five is public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. And Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Barry Levinson, followed by Valerie Fianaca. Barry Levinson. Okay. There are documents to be distributed.
Thank you for doing your job there. I'm actually glad you certified this one. I want to say, Valerie Fianaca, for the record, the caucus was an overwhelming success. I headed up a site in Sun Valley at a small school, which required people to wait outside. Despite the wait and the cold, the people were excited to be there and to participate. We were able to process approximately seven hundred voters in three hours, including counting time, which many stayed to witness. The thing that struck me most is the hunger for connection within our community that was stolen during COVID. We processed all this with fifteen volunteers. I realized at the end of the night that my own children, who are thirty-eight, thirty-seven, and thirty-six, had never voted in person. And I was really sad about that because most of the people that are in this room have voted in person, and they probably remember what that's like. I realized, I realized then that I missed that, and I enjoyed, I really enjoyed the evening. We need to return to this very basic, cheap, patriotic method of voting, which involves the community at a visceral level. The envelope wrapping our ballots are pink and blue with circular hole in the outside envelope, negating the secrecy of our ballot. From the get-go, it's not a secret ballot. Our mailman can tell if you're a Republican or a Democrat, that's, it's not a secret ballot in any way. I have given you some election data I have been too busy to get to due to Valentine's Day and no meetings for a while. It's a lot of data. I'm sorry about that. I dumped on you kind of, this one. And I've also given you a packet of info. I sent you an email, and I'm sorry, it was a very poorly written email, but I'm going to make up for it in what I've given you. I scoured social media on the ninety-plus people who applied for the Library Board of Trustees. And when I say scour, I mean I scoured, probably social media you've never even heard of before. And one applicant stood out. I would, I would suggest that we somehow develop a more thorough vetting process than a couple of questions by one commissioner. That one, I would ask that you please take the time to look at, because I think it's kind of important as we're vetting candidates for the Library Board of Trustees, because that's been a very controversial position, and we need to calm that situation down drastically. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Jeff Church, followed by Kimberly Carden. And I have a document to distribute for Mr. Church.
Bear with me just one sec. Do you still have the overhead?
It's ready for you.
If you have it, there it is. Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Church. Views expressed today are mine. This overhead, if it shows, this is off the Washoe County official website. You probably can't see that very well. It's actually from the official Washoe County Library website, and, thank you, good catch. And it states, "On November 5th, 2024, Washoe County voters will decide whether to extend a thirty-year tax override." Goes on and on. It further says, "If you don't extend the tax, some negatives are going to happen. Librarians will be laid off. The book budget will be eliminated, blah, blah, blah." So I drove, I noticed many people, I go, this isn't true. I drove down personally to the Secretary of State. There's no such ballot measure. To the best of my knowledge at the time, nobody has filed to do a petition on it. So it just concerns me that you're putting false information out to the community that's not true. And I pretty well verified a hundred percent it's not true. There is no ballot measure that's going to be on. Now, maybe there will be, maybe some group's going to come up between now and June, but you can't do that. Further, Nevada v. statute, and I listed it in there, 281A400, basically indicates that public officials in the county cannot advocate for or against a ballot measure. You can't do it. It's against, it's against the law. So I urge you to not do this again. I don't know if it's still up there, but take it down if it is, and don't do it again. You can't advocate for or against a ballot measure. You can do it personally, but you can't do it as a government using my taxpayer dollars. You know, if this comes up, we'll talk about it. You know, I'm not opposed to new taxes, depending on the circumstances. There are some golden rules of taxes. Number one, they have to sunset, as this previous one does. It's got to have real oversight, and it's got to be for a specific purpose. And so if it does that, that's great. The other issue is, it's not a renewal. You gotta, please, stop calling it a renewal. This ballot measure from 1994 expires, period. There's nothing in the provision that says it can be renewed. If it was, it would have been put in there. So any ballot measure still has to be rewritten. It has to be approved by the Board of County Commissioners. Then it goes to the ballot as a de novo, brand-new ballot measure. It's not a renewal, so I really, really object to that wordsmithing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Kimberly Carden, followed by Edward Goodrich.
Yeah, so I'm Kimberly Carden. I'm a resident of Commissioner Andriola's district. I'm also a member of Indivisible Northern Nevada, and I'm here for two reasons. First reason is to express my support for the primary and for mail-in ballots. I'm a twenty-six-year active-duty Army retiree, and during that entire time, I voted by mail. I was stationed in fourteen different locations in four different countries. I always had full confidence that my vote was going to count. And with that being said, I also wanted to express my sincere appreciation for the county registrar's office, for the interim registrar, for the employees, both permanent and temporary, and for all of the volunteers. I worked as an election observer a couple times in the last, not this past election, but the ones previously, as well as I worked in caucus, which was the first time. I had, you know, like I said, I was doing mail-in ballots forever, and then I show up in Nevada and I participate in my first caucus. And I much prefer the primaries, and I much prefer the mail-in ballots. Thank you.
Thank you.
Edward Goodrich, followed by William Stewart.
Good morning, Commissioners. I hope you're having a nice day. My name is Edward Goodrich, and I would like to commend the Commissioners, Registrar's Office, and the air employees for their diligent work in this primary. I observed that one of the two major officially recognized political parties in Nevada chose to dilute the value of our first in the West presidential primary election by holding a competing presidential caucus with rules that candidates could not participate in both the caucus and election, as opposed to the strategic direction you have under the law. This caused confusion for election officials, and more importantly, massive confusion for voters. In addition, time and money was lost in the effort to form Nevada into the bellwether and influential leader in voting trends for states west of the Mississippi. The effect of this action by a major political party was to not only dilute the value of the presidential primary election, but to also cost the state and county funds to hold what is in reality a devalued election. I would ask that the Commissioners submit, either on their own behalf or using and allotted through an elected legislator, BDR, for the next legislative session, proposing that if a major political party recognized by the state of Nevada chooses to hold an exclusive presidential caucus instead of participating in Nevada's presidential primary, that the sponsoring state political party be held responsible for its portions of the election's costs incurred for that presidential primary, thereby returning the legally required monies expended by the county and state back to the people of Nevada who are in fact financing these elections. That's number one. Number two, post office. I was at the public comment meeting this Tuesday, as was the registrar, voicing her opposition to the redefining and moving and closing of one of the facilities. I encourage the Commissioners to go as quickly as possible to their federally elected officials and voice their opposition officially and personally. It's not, you know, it's a bad thing, and the numbers are not adding up for them. Then also, I have three words for the commission. One, for the parliamentarian, proper order. Two, for the chair, germane. Three, for the commissioner, comity. Look them up if you have to, but these that kerfuffle this morning, they base the committee.
William Stewart, followed by Scott Finley.
Good morning, for the record, William T. Stewart. So Commissioner Clark, great point. The voter rolls need a lot of help. That's something we need to get back to and figure out, who those voters are, whether they're dead, alive, moved to Australia, the on and on and on. So that's a big deal. And what I show you here, too, is, this is your guys' meetings for 2024. And then Commissioner Clark, you stated about public comment. I agree wholeheartedly that public comment should be on the record beforehand as well as after, because a lot of these people sitting here can't sit for three hours. You were elected to do the government's business, and so that's why you're here, and you guys can be here. There's only fourteen, sixteen, I believe, message or meetings that you guys have. And then going back to the caucus, I was a precinct captain in Supovera School. I thank everybody else who came out and voted. One of the biggest things is we need more volunteers. So if you guys are here, please volunteer for the next election and get involved. It's our duty to be involved in our local officials' business, because that's our business. Because of caucus, you have to have voter ID. How many people are streaming across the country in our borders right now illegally? Millions. Millions of people are coming to this country illegally. So if they don't have a ID, they can't vote. Precinct-based voting, election day, not election month, I mean, those votes should be counted that day and turned into the registrar's office. Paper ballots, going back to paper ballots, we don't need machines. We have people that can count them. Hire those people, like one of the people said, or have volunteers. I volunteer, everybody volunteer. No dark money and transparent tabulation. Those are things that we can do, and we got to do a better job. And there's lots of issues before us here in the county, whether it's elections, whether it's fire, whether it's public safety, making sure that you guys can work together. That's what it says, working together, right? To be able to provide a safe and secure county that goes across the board, no matter what the business is. I know for the state level, they just actually opened up the state's checkbook. Now we can see exactly where our money is being spent throughout the state of Nevada, and I urge you guys to do the same, and they're going to hopefully push that down to you guys at the county. Then the last thing I would like to leave you with is, this is from Billy Graham. "There are many ways to describe politics. Many of our forefathers, thankfully, were Christians. America was founded on biblical principles. Our laws based on scripture. In the early days of our nation, politicians quoted the Bible so frequently that they didn't even have to give references, because most of the nation's settlers knew the Bible. The world politics is a wide meaning that merely a political party or platform, politics affect community life, our towns, our cities, our states, and our county. Churches filled with Christians have a right to be concerned about where politics takes our nation. We have forgotten that our nation grew strong in an era when moral standards were emphasized. It was growing weak because we condoned that which we once condemned. The secret strength of a nation is found in the faith that abides in the hearts, homes, and families. We must return to the faith of our fathers." Thank you very much. God bless.
Scott Finley, followed by Renee Rosentus. Okay, and I do have documents to distribute for Mr. Finley.
Please enter my comment in this document into the record pursuant to NRS 241. My name is Scott Finley. I am a resident of Washoe County and have a military background in the United States Air Force. The Washoe County Board of Commissioners must make a formal declaration rejecting the presidential preference primary, also known as the PPP. In the state of Nevada, political parties have for decades performed caucusing in order to satisfactorily identify and select the party's choice of candidate in running for the U.S. presidency. Nevada is called first in the West for a reason. We earned this title by making sure that we hold the caucus early in the primary election season, battling sleet and snow. In 2021, the Democrat-controlled state government passed a law that requires the state of Nevada to hold the PPP. The Republican Party challenged this law in court. The Nevada Supreme Court found that the PPP is legal, because at the end of the day, the state government cannot dictate how a political party distributes its delegates to a political party nominee. Yet, as already stated, a political party nominee must secure delegates in order to become that party's choice candidate in running for the U.S. presidency. This begs the question, what is the point in the state of Nevada moving forward with the PPP? The Democrat-controlled state government seeks to confuse voters in an attempt to suppress voter participation in a rivaling political party's caucus. Had the Nevada Supreme Court decided not to make that ruling, then it would have enabled the state government to dictate what political party nominees that a political party can select as their choice of candidate in running for the U.S. presidency. In such a scenario, the Democrat-controlled state government would have been able to tell the Republican Party which nominees to award delegates to, effectively dictating the Republicans' Party choice candidate in running for the U.S. presidency. This would dissolve the autonomy for all political parties, effectively creating a super, creating a single super political party that is the equivalent of a sole ruling party. In Communist China, they call such an entity the Chinese Communist Party, also known as the CCP, and they dictate everything. It is well-established that when you do business with any company from China, you are doing business with the CCP. Whether it's the Democrat Party leadership, the establishment, globalists, or true evil, they seek to remove our freedom of choice and turn it into an illusion. They boast it as election fortification and openly mock us. They want us demoralized and broken beyond hope. They want our friends, family, and community to succumb to their perversions and nihilism. The inconvenient truth is that we live in a world with rampaging psychopaths, and the price we must pay as vanguards of justice is eternal vigilance. People have to close rank in order to overcome and vanquish true evil. Thank you.
Renee Rosentus, followed by Penny Brock.
Renee Rosentus, for the record. Okay, first of all, we don't need to reimburse anybody any money because we voted in the caucus and supported the caucus. That's been around for years and years, and it was Sisalak a few years ago who submitted the bill to put forth the PPP. So if anybody owes anyone a reimbursement, it would be Washoe County to the people who supported the caucus, because we didn't cost the county anything, but we still had to pay the taxes for the PPP. I want to go off and talk about Jeanne Herman when the, the vote came forth for the commission chair. I learned a little bit about that, and my understanding is that your complaint about her not attending these, these, whatever gatherings it was, she was not required to be there. But you made it sound like she was, and she deliberately just missed these meetings. She was not required to be there. She didn't have a voice, and she had to be invited by the chair in order to participate. And if... And if I'm wrong and I misunderstood, I want to know, I want to know the process. But it was submitted in that manner, and so I think that was very unfair to Commissioner Herman. And I think that next time, I think that we should be aware of the procedures and whether or not a person needs to be invited. And I heard it was only 10 minutes long, these meetings on the phone, so I'm not even sure what kind of a record you had regarding these meetings. So anyway, I would like to learn more about it, and Chair Hill, I would like you to explain that to me. So I would like to get in touch with you, and I would like to hear your version. Okay, thank you.
Penny Brock, followed by Janet Butcher.
Penny Brock, for the record, please put my comments in the minutes per NRS. I would like to address an item I spoke about at the last meeting almost a month ago. I again ask for paper ballots and hand counting to be on the agenda, of which Commissioner Clark reiterated that. The chair had assured him at some point in time that any agenda item that a commissioner asked for would be put on the agenda, and yet this keeps not being put on the agenda. So then Manager Brown made the comment, well, he'd sent the agenda item to the Secretary of State's office. Well, there's a problem because the DA's office approved it, that it could be on the agenda. So when did the manager become an attorney? Number two, I called the Secretary of State's office, and they told me they had no record of receiving that from Manager Brown. So I want to know, what is the truth? Did he send something down there? I want to know what the written record is, if in fact he did send it. Has he gotten a response? Secondly, moving along, so again, I ask for paper ballots and hand counting to be on the agenda. There are over 200 counties, and the number's growing, of counties putting paper ballots and hand counting on the agenda. Nye County, it's working very well in Nye County. In fact, they also have the Dominion do the hand, do the counting, and it turns out the hand counting is more accurate than the Dominion. Secondly, I was at the United States Post Office meeting, and this is a real concern for many, many, many reasons, but especially when it comes to election integrity. We have to have the ballots secure, we have to know where they are, in whose hands are they all the time, and we won't have that if this goes, if our mail-in ballots go over the hill to Sacramento, there are many hands will handle them. Secondly, if you want to get a comment in, it has to be made by February 28th, so the county commission does not have much time to get their comments in by February 28th. The other problem I see is we have Amber McReynolds, I've also asked if she still has a contract, which I've not gotten an answer, but Amber McReynolds is the Vice Chairman of the United States Post Office. When Ms. Burgess made her comment at that post office meeting, she said she had a contact in Washington, D.C., she was going to contact the next day. So instead of saying it was the Vice Chairman of the U.S. Post Office Board, of which I wonder what response she got back from Amber McReynolds. Thank you.
Janet Butcher, followed by Buddy Miller.
Janet Butcher, for the record, please enter my comments into the minutes verbatim per NRS. I'm disappointed that the Blue Brigade left, but, and I understand that maybe the Democrats may not run a smooth caucus, so they don't like it. I do appreciate the praises for the election workers, as I have worked before as an election worker, and I'm signed up to work again. But please note, I didn't sign up for the PPP because the important one was the caucus, the delegates would be awarded through the caucus and the caucus only. We have been a caucus state many, many years. We know why this PPP was set forth, it's pretty obvious, because you can change your affiliation at the last minute. All this universal mail-in ballot, uncontrollable, and I understand that it was kind of left out when they were complaining about people not being able to vote. The military was allowed to vote in the caucus. I just wonder why the Democrat Party feels the need that they have to go out and pull in ballots. I understand that they are, have people at the CARES campus right now signing up people who are in and out of the CARES campus. Also, I want to bring to light that on February 13th, the Gateway Pundit published that they managed to receive documents via FOIA request that reveals a secret 2020 Election Day meeting with the CISA, Dominion, ESNS, Eric, you know, where they changed my voter registration date, FBI, leftist organizations, state officials, and others, only recently discovered. So go out and look at the Gateway Pundit. I also, real quick, had the opportunity to educate a young lady who volunteered at the caucus. She said she doesn't get this information in school. She didn't understand the difference between a primary and the general election, nonpartisan candidates and partisan candidates, which I guess some people don't either understand that. But anyway, it was really fun, it was really enlightening to be able to educate her, and she said she does not get this in our schools. Thank you.
Buddy Miller, followed by Roger Shimae.
Real short, I much prefer the Presidential Preference Primary. I've been to a lot of caucuses, and I could do without the, they're time-consuming, they take a lot of energy, sometimes they're contagious, and I think, I think we're just all better off if we go to the Presidential Preference Primary. If the Republicans wanted to stick with the caucus, that's fine, I don't, I don't mind. But let's go with the Presidential Preference Primary. It worked out really well, and again, Carrie Anne Burgess did an absolute excellent job.
Thank you. Roger Shimae.
Boy, I hope I'm brief. Number one, I'd like to remind everybody that the decision to go to a primary as opposed to a caucus was not made here in Washoe County, it was made at the state level in Carson City, and so discussing it and arguing about it here is kind of meaningless. Second of all, I agree with Mr. Clark regarding I-80, you're the first person who brought it up, and the, moving the post office over there. I-80 is a disaster, it's closed for many, many reasons, sometimes for two or three days at a time if there's a lot of rain and snow. So I think that the board should put together a resolution, state as unequivocally as possible, that it not be moved to Sacramento, state so take a vote on it as a resolution or whatever. And third, boy, I'm really doing well on time. I suggest the establishment of something like a citizen advisory board or a working group, composed of people like myself and some of the people who've spoken here, where we can discuss things like voter rolls, registration rolls, holes in ballot envelopes, things like this, ways that we can make changes and then provide suggestions to the board on an advisory basis, but at least put it all together in one place, and maybe we can streamline the process a little bit more. Thank you.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will now move on to Item 6, Mr. Manager.
Item 6 is commissioners, county managers, announcements, reports, and updates to include boards and commissions, updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Okay, thank you. Do you have anything else for us, Mr. Manager?
I do. Madam Chair, first of all, with regards to the U.S. Postal Service issue, I want to acknowledge that interim ROV Burgess did attend the meeting, as you've heard, and she was the one, it is my understanding, she was the one that notified the Secretary of State's office of this concerning development. The meeting initially was communicated to the county and to the Secretary of State in a manner that it wasn't clear this was the road they were going, that they were going to be addressing. It was a community input meeting. Having said that, I spoke to Mark Vlachin in the Secretary of State's office yesterday, multiple occasions. He wanted you to know that Secretary of State is definitely aware of the issue, and he is in contact with our congressional delegation and other folks in Washington to try to identify the solution and make sure this doesn't happen. If there is an update, I will certainly share it with the commission, I think prior to our meeting on Tuesday. We're likely to get an update on next steps. I asked if they wanted us to send a letter or proclamation or expression. Again, this discussion was last night, so the answer was not, not yet, let us figure out what our game plan is, and we'll follow up with you. So that's the update on that particular matter. I think everybody understands this is larger than just a mail ballot issue, it's an issue that impacts our community on a much, in Northern Nevada, on a much larger basis. Secondly, I do want to lend my own thank you to Carrie Anne and her team. All of you have performed marvelously. I've been visiting vote center locations over the last four years in the 2020 elections, both the primary and the general, as well as in 2022. I've never seen us this well-prepared. I've never seen the vote centers with the kind of morale that I saw on, over the early primary, sorry, early voting days, but also on Election Day. So job well done. Now, that was a warm-up game, you guys know that. Now we head towards the primary, which is going to be much, much more complicated from a ballot standpoint, and we're going to have more vote centers, but I'm encouraged by what I've seen from all of you, and I just want to thank you. The other group I want to thank that I don't think's been addressed today is the Washoe County Department Heads. There are many, a lot of people don't realize that in order to do the election, execute the elections, do the vote counting and the things that we have to do, very often we call upon Washoe County employees to either volunteer their time, or their department heads allocate time for them to actually assist the registrar voters in making things happen. Once again, I want to congratulate interim ROV Burgess because she did a great job in a short period of time, she hasn't been here that long, forging alliances. I saw folks from HR, from certainly the clerk, including the clerk herself in the vote counting room that night, Recorder's Office, Tech Services did a wonderful job assisting the vote centers, and there are others I'm sure I'm leaving out. But suffice it to say to all the department heads, thank you for what you've done, and again, as we move towards the primary and the general, we're going to need you to step up again in an even bigger way, and I think with what we saw in the Presidential Preference Primary, we can certainly have confidence we can do that. That's it, Madam Chair, for me.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to first address a comment made by one of the public commenters about our kerfuffle here this morning. I haven't seen this person here on a regular basis, but this has been an ongoing issue. I don't interrupt the chair when she's speaking, but for whatever reason, if I go down some way that she doesn't think is appropriate, she wants to contact me and tell me that I can't continue that discussion. I've also asked for the DA's opinion in the past, and she cut off the DA. So this is, you know, I'll extend the courtesy, the common courtesy of not interrupting her when she speaks, and she'll extend that same courtesy to me and not interrupt me when I'm speaking. Let me finish my train of thought. Don't interrupt me, and I'll get to the point. I don't think that, you know, we're all elected by the same number of folks, approximately the same number of folks in each of our districts, and I think I have the right to finish my thought without being interrupted. So that's the first thing. The second thing I want to talk about is whether the Secretary of the State thinks we should write a letter or not. I think we should, and it isn't just about elections. I get that. I mean, this is a lot of jobs, a lot of good-paying jobs for people in our community if they close down the postal center here, the main branch. Also, the impact on mail delivery for not just, you know, the post, the polling and the elections and the ballots, that's just a little piece of the puzzle, but think about the quality of service that we're not going to have if the post office is closed. So I think that, you know, whether the Secretary of State thinks it's a good idea or not, I think it's a bad idea for our community not to have that main postal center open. And I think we should send a letter to that effect, to our congressional delegates, and let them know that we don't think that's a good idea for a lot of reasons, and ballots are just one of them. So I would like to see a resolution, or at least on the agenda, to vote whether we should do this on the next commission meeting. So that's what I'm asking for. Put this on the agenda, and let's have a vote, and see if we should write a letter to protect jobs of Navannans, Washoe County residents. So that's my focus, and the rest of it will play out how it plays out, but we should try and save the jobs for our neighbors. Next, I want to put a letter on the record from Secretary of State Aguilar to Manager Brown, and I got a copy of this this morning about apparently the, and I want it to be on the record that everybody realizes that Commissioner Vice Chair Herman's resolution to change the elections has been called, called off or denied by the Secretary of State. So that's dead in the water. We were told numerous times that we would at least have a vote on the dais about whether we should move forward on that. That could have been shut off on the dais, as you see many three-to-two votes around here, so it wouldn't have surprised me at all if it got shut down here, but it never got to that. And I think there's a reason that certain people don't want to go on the record on their position on this. So I'm going to give this to the clerk, it'll be in the public record, any of you can take a look at it, read it, ask for it, it'll soon be in the public record. Thank you.
Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to echo the sentiments that Mr. Manager said, well said, Mr. Manager. I like that you brought up the department heads. I specifically want to give a shout out to our IT folks. I'm looking at our live feed in our election room, that took a lot of courage. I know there was a lot of fear and misconceptions and thoughts that maybe we weren't being as transparent as we were. I was just, quick question, when is the feed going to be coming down? Do we know?
Is it down?
Today. At 5:00 today. Okay. I just wanted to make sure that folks knew that that was happening, but I also wanted to acknowledge that that was really great. So after this meeting, I've been told, okay. Thank you so much, and again, thank you to all of you. I popped in the day after the election, and I talked to a young man, and he was like, we, I was here, I had an 18-hour day, and I don't think people realize how time-consuming and how much work, and I just really wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I really want to also thank everyone. I participated- I participated in waiting in line at the caucus and it was what many has already described in terms of meeting neighbors and having conversation and really connecting. I also really want to thank, obviously, the interim RV and the staff for, you know, fulfilling the legal requirements that you had with the PPP. I think some of the comments today really resonated with my years at the legislature where a lot of the items that sometimes are being brought up really need to change at the legislature. And I think that's something that each of you can think about as this becomes important with what we have in representation at Carson. You know, I personally fought so hard to approve voter ID. And even if we all wanted it, the reality is, is that there's compliance requirements that one has to go through. As I've mentioned several times, and I'll mention again, you know, the Board of County Commission was created by the legislature. And there are limitations to which the commission can actually exercise various positions on various items. So I think it's important that we look at what can change and where that needs to change. So I think considering that we have just finished all of this and various parties had an opportunity to participate as they so desired to, and I really think that everyone should be recognized for the hard work, wherever it was that you worked. So I wanted to just, you know, make sure that everybody understands that we recognize that there was sometimes being viewed as competing opportunities to participate. So I always really want to extend a thank you to everybody, to be honest with you. That's what makes our country great, is being able to make decisions that are your decisions and representing your beliefs. I actually don't know if it's appropriate, but I can ask a question of the county manager in terms of the post office. I appreciate you giving the update, but I wanted to ask if you have an idea of timeframe? In other words, when would they be making their final decision on this?
The post office?
Mm-hmm.
I have no idea.
Okay.
I have no idea. And I think that's part of what the Secretary of State's following up on, is to find out where is this in the process? And, you know, what are our options in terms of doing what we can to mitigate it or stop it?
Well, I personally, you know, and professionally believe that it's everybody's responsibility to share your voice in terms of your representatives from the state of Nevada, to actually reach out to them and share your concern. It's very evident that it is a concern and it is beyond the election. It's a concern for not only the jobs that have already been shared, but just the fact that, I don't even understand what provoked that. I don't know. And I'm certainly going to do my best to try and find out. But I think individually, everyone should have that opportunity to actually reach out to your federal representatives that represent the state and let them know how you feel. I don't understand, as I've just mentioned, why that occurred, what provoked that to even be happening. I think all jurisdictions, not just Washoe County, but all, it affects everybody. So I think everyone should have that opportunity to share their concern. And that's what I'm going to encourage, including myself personally, making some phone calls actually today. So I really appreciate the update, but I don't know. You don't have the reason? You don't know the reason either, county manager, by any chance?
No.
Okay. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't mean to make light of this, but my crystal ball said it has to do with money. Okay? Just cost savings, probably. That being said, there's a timeline, I guess, a deadline of the 28th is what I heard, to make a comment, either pro or against closing the post office. So the 28th seems to be the deadline of the post office accepting comments, at least that's what I've heard here. So somebody should fact-check that and see if that's accurate or not. Next, I want to thank security for being here today, as usual, doing a great job, and the sheriff's department for always being here and doing a great job keeping the crowd tame. Thank you. And we got to give a shout out to Mr. Large coming in as a relief pitcher at the end of the game. So thank you for being here. And lastly, I'd like to ask for a tour of the, my personal tour of the registrar voter's office. I have never been in there. I'd like to see what's taking place over there and have a better understanding of how that office works. So if I can make that request, thank you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments? I'm not seeing any. So with that, we are adjourned. Thanks for a great meeting, everyone.